The 2016 budget hearing, an annual meeting of the Oregon School District is called to order at 6:30 PM on Monday, September 26, 2016. My name is Steve Zock. I'm the president of the Oregon School Board. This meeting is prescribed by state statute and the electors of the district are invited to attend. There are special powers reserved to the district and the electors, and those are outlined in state statute. This meeting will be conducted according to the rules of parliamentary procedure. There are two parts to this meeting. The first is a budget hearing. We'll hear from Andy Wyland, our business manager. And then the second is the annual meeting in which we will adopt a tax levy, adopt board salaries for 2016-17 instead of meeting date for the 2017 annual meeting. With respect to the budget hearing, I should note that we have a number of board members present tonight. Mark Beany is here, who's the vice president. Kristoff Planigan is a clerk. Charlie Upoff is here. Gwen Maitzen and Dan Kraus is here. Jeff Raymond is our treasurer, and he has got a conflict tonight and notified me that he would not be present this evening. With respect to the budget hearing, our books for 2015-2016 have been audited by our auditors, and we expect an unmodified report that's currently being finalized. And in the process, when it is finalized, the board will receive that report and meet with our auditor and be able to ask questions of the auditor regarding that. And at this time, I would ask Andy Wyland, the district's business manager, to come up and deliver our financial report.
Thanks, Stephen. So as Mr. Zock just said, our audits, the books have been audited. This is a letter of anticipation of an unmodified opinion, but the numbers have been certified through the Department of Public Instruction. So for the most part, everything's done. They're just kind of wrapping things up a little bit. Financial report, I'm going to be real quick. To preface a couple of things you might hear tonight, words awesome and great are in this. Things are going really well last year. I'm going to talk about these funds, and I'm going to really mention them because I'm going to try to get through this fairly quickly tonight. But I want to go through each one of these funds real quickly as far as how they performed. First thing is, we always look at Fund 10 and 27. Those are our main funds in the district that we operate with. The original budget, we'll look at this a couple of different ways. The original budget was about $44,003,000. Actual budget spent was about $44,200. So we are within 0.26 percent of our revenues, which is pretty darn good. Expenditure-wise, we underspent our expenditures by about $745,000 or 1.6 percent. A good part of that, though, is in carryover that we typically have each year. But I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a second. Oops, wrong arrow. Budget, sorry. So when we talk about October revenues and expenditures, that's just our original budget. Those are the budgets that we set in October. That's why we called it October. But the budget, actually, if you looked at our revenues to expenditures last year, were actually expenditures exceeded revenues by over $841,000. That's typical for us because we are using, trying to use budgeted carryover from year to year. So we don't really necessarily have a balanced budget, but it's because we're allowing schools to carry money over from year to year, as well as departments. There are a couple of things. For instance, our technology improvements that we did a couple of years ago where we're actually trying to spun fund balance down in order to pay for some needed improvements. So expenditures to revenues last year were out of balance a little bit. How do we actually do? We did significantly better than that. We only spent $213,000 of more expenditures than revenues, even though we had planned $841,000. So fund balance did go down a little bit, but it was planned, and the next sheet kind of shows that. You see that fund balances categories in a lot of different ways. Non-spendable, that's land. That's a construction home. In 2015, we were lucky enough, actually, we bought it a couple of years prior, we had a lot that we built on that was about $72,000. Land prices have gotten a little bit more expensive, and we bought the land last year for the construction house we're building right now. That lot was $95,000. So that's non-spendable funds. It's an asset, if you would. Restricted self-insurance, that's our dental. Our dental balance actually did go up about $6,000-$7,000 last year. So our dental plan hasn't had a rate, hasn't had an increase in premiums for a while. We are having a little premium increase this year because we're starting to get close, and it was recommended by our insurance folks to do that, but it still performed well. Our assigned fund balance, those are the monies that we put aside for budgeted carryovers from year to year. So that's the department, mostly department and school carryover dollars. And you can kind of see that we actually reduced that. So that balance was getting a little high, which was making me uncomfortable. So our buildings did a good job, and our departments are spending that down a little bit. So here's the number that I am most impressed about for this report, is that our unassigned balance actually was almost dead-on. It's $40,000 off, and then it went up a little bit. So our unassigned fund balance is really the number that I would look at, and it's real, real close to what it was, what we hoped to be, which was basically zero, to make sure that our planned expenditures equaled our climbing revenues. So fund balance did go down, but it was planned, if that makes sense. Assigned fund balance, this is the breakout of that $796,000. Building department, a carryover, $442,000. Director of instruction, actually, the next two line items are under Dr. Bergstrom's control. And in technology, infrastructure, we're still spending, I think, around $120,000 every year for a couple of years in order to pay for a 0 percent interest loan that we got from Cisco to install wireless information, wireless networking system. So referendum-approved debt, so these are, basically, we had equity of $890,000 at the end, and we have some payments that we have to make before we have, before we get any tax revenue. And so required, I hold that money in the side. These are the funds, these are the actually bonds that we have to pay. And if you take that out of the balance, there's still about $25,000 left over. That can be used to pay debt service in the future. Non-referendum debt, same type of thing. We had equity of about $59,000. We have a payment on September 1, or did have a payment on September 1 that we already made, for $37,000, so we do have a little balance left over there as well. School improvement funds, these are the referendum dollars that we're using to build everything. And you'll see that as we go through this, they'll be down significantly as we're building things. But the $54,007,000, we're down to $35,000. JCPark improvements, this was approved a few years ago. We actually had to have the money spent by the spring of this next year, and the money is spent on JCPark improvements. So we spent that fund down to zero. Food service fund, another good news. We brought in about 1.38, we spent about 1.37. We had about a $7,000 increase in equity. So food service fund was darn close to balanced, which is great, great that happened. Total equity in this year is 1.92, I'm sorry, not 1.92, $192,000. Community service fund, fund balance at the beginning of the year was about $3,200. If you recall, we moved a bunch of money to Fund 21 this last year. Revenues, $501,000, expenditures, $345,000. We did have a fund balance of almost $39,000. That's problematic because we have to basically, we can't have a balance in community ed anymore. So we'll actually be under levying by $39,000 in community ed for this next year to use up that fund balance. So it's kind of being treated like Fund 27, where you want a zero balance at the end of the year. So we are, with the new guidelines, that's what we're headed for. OPEP liability and employee trust funds. OPEP liability pays for post-employment benefits, health insurance for our employees after they retire. And then the employee trust fund is basically sick leave conversion dollars that we hold in the employer's, employees' behalf so that they can buy health insurance when they retire. And it's basically from sick leave conversion. So you see, we did have an equity increase of $127,000 to an equity of $3.9 million. Investment return, we have to talk about this real quick. By law, we made about $11,000 in interest. We are very, 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 very conservative with our approach with investments. If you did the math, that's about a little over a quarter percent interest return. That's because we don't really invest in anything except things that are not going to fail. We're going to continue to have our principle of, OPEP liability breaks down a little bit, kind of the trends, what's going on with it. The big thing that I'll point out in this slide is that our fund balance is increasing a little bit each year, which it has to by DPI guidelines. We have to continue to increase the amount of money we have inside. And our district liability's actually been decreasing because of how we structured our benefit. We're down to about a $4 million liability. It's actually a little bit more than that. It's offset by the fund balance, the liability is offset by the fund balance. So here's the balances of those two. Employee trust fund, we have about a quarter million dollars. It went down. That just means that employees were using more money than was put in for employees. Not a big deal to worry about. And the OPEP, you see that raising up a little bit, which is required by the Department of Public Instruction, about $3.6 million. That's a quick recap of how the budget performed last year. Good, again, really good information, or really good news all around. Nothing surprised me in any of that, and somehow I just turned everything off. There we go. So we're going to move into kind of what the budget is for this next year. And a couple reminders with the budget for this next year, which is 1617, which we're already a month into, is that we are presenting this at the annual meeting. It's still estimates. It's actually estimates from about three weeks ago because we had publication requirements that we had to put it in the paper. So that information is old, and I can perhaps tell you a little bit about what we're seeing right now as we're a week outside of Third Friday at this point. And the budget, Board of Education actually approves the original budget in October and sets the tax levy. This is kind of a different stuff. It's required by law, but not exactly overly helpful because we have to have our Third Friday counts in order to set the tax levy, which won't happen until October, which is why we were talking about October before on the previous slides. Some assumptions, enrollment is estimated. I will make a comment there. Enrollment was estimated a little bit higher than it should have been. We're a little bit too optimistic. We still think that we're on the right path, that we won't have to make huge, huge adjustments. But as I warned, I did try to take a little bit more optimistic projections this last year so that we wouldn't have a ton of money left over when we got to October. I don't anticipate that happening this year. It's going to be right on. Zero per-member base increase in the state budget. We didn't get any increase in our revenue limitation. $250 member per, is a one-year categorical aid adjustment. Last year it was $150,000, so we did get $100 more as a prior year for our students in the categorical aid program. In the past, during budget negotiations at the state, they have tried to take that money away, which obviously would be significantly difficult for all school districts in the state of Wisconsin. Our hope would be that they would continue to fund that and increase that in some way to give us some spending, additional spending toward it. General state aid is estimated, but we'll be close there. Special education aid is prorated at 26 percent. Equalized value estimate, which basically just determines our mill rate, is estimated at 4.5 percent. That's probably pretty close to where I anticipated it being. Taxing districts, we have 10 different municipalities. They all have different things going on with their assessment values. Village of Oregon saw a significant increase in EAV increase. Other taxing districts are a little bit lower than Oregon. Revenues by source, just to give you a feel for where our revenues are coming from, pretty much fairly equal, equalization aid, property taxes. Equalization aid is slightly larger than property taxes at this point. And you see state sources, other state sources make up a little bit, inter-district, between-districts, things going on. And then federal aid is about 3 percent. Revenue limit, I talked about revenue limit a couple of times. It's based on the number of students we have from year to year and an adjustment that the state may or may not give us. That really determines the majority of our budget, 84 percent of our budget is determined by that limitation. So here's how we looked at new revenue this year. Again, these estimates are a little bit optimistic. I see them coming down a little bit. But a revenue limit increase based on increases in students last year and this year, it's a three-year average. That helped us last year. It helped us this year, and it'll help us another year out for last year's increase in enrollment. And then this year's enrollment, well, we anticipate still an increase, but not by as much as I anticipated. The per-people aid, which I talked about a little bit before, that $250 per student, open enrollment, we're continually planning on having additional open enrollment, students coming to our district, and we're a net winner in that regard. With more students, we equal more aid to our district. So we anticipated about a $1.2 million increase in budget and revenue side, and will be less than that, but for purposes of where we were a month ago, this is what we're using. So you saw 82 increase FTE. Our three-year average was closer to 48. That number was probably closer to 50 when we're all sides done. The increase in $100 in per-people aid, that's guaranteed, that's in the biannual budget. And then increase in open enrollment students plus change in law for special education. Special education students for the first year ever, if they come to us from other districts, we're giving $12,000 per student rather than about $600-$700 that a regular education student does. So that had an impact on us this year. Equalization aid, property tax comparison, just about a 10-year history, or look back, actually closer to 15, it looks like. You can kind of see what's been going on there. Back in 2002-2003, we had about 63 percent equalization aid, the 36 property taxes, as you can see, were darn close to even, and we've actually been kind of going up and down a little bit. This number is just basically how much EAV we have in our district compared to this entire state of Wisconsin. And we just kind of look at that, see what's been happening. And you look over the 15 years, you can see that even though it feels real minor, it's fairly significant that we have more EAV in our district than we did a few years ago. It's kind of just a way to compare what's going on. The reason that it's important is as you have more EAV, because it has value, the state ATEC formula looks at you as being, quote-unquote, "rich." And at some point in time, instead of getting more aid on a year-to-year basis, you might get less aid. It's called tertiary aid, negative tertiary aid. So a lot of districts around us have that issue, Verona, Madison, Middleton, et cetera. Oregon is right on the threshold. Let's move into expenditures real quick, where our monies go. Construction, which is a code the Department of Public Instruction kind of defines, makes up about 56 percent. Administrative and support, that could be libraries, counselors, any of those types of things, is 20 percent. So you're right there, you're around 76 percent. And you have maintenance and operations, transportation, debt service, technical, central services, instructional, insurance, and other. Type of expenditure, it's a different way to look at the expenditures, the same pie as before, just chopped up a little bit differently. Salary, oops, sorry, salaries and benefits make up over 76 percent. And we get into purchase services, non-capital object, capital object, debt service, insurance, and other. Operating funds reconciliation, so we talked a little bit about revenues, where they're coming from, our expenditures, where they're going. And you see that we actually are anticipating a decrease again in fund balance, not as much as by last year, because our, as I mentioned in the last presentation, the amount of assigned fund balance is down, but we have about a $680,000 deficit anticipated. Of that, $556,000 is building carryover, departmental carryover, and then we have technology, infrastructure, that's that 0 percent interest loan that I mentioned before, and $120,000 this year, and $120,000 one more year out. And then non-referendum debt, that's just a timing issue of when we levy compared to when the bonds are due, the bond payments are due. Just thought I'd mention this, I know Mr. Zock has mentioned this a couple of times. These are levy years on the bottom, so we are right here. We have one more year of levy, a little slight increase, probably about $100,000 in our referendum debt payment. It'll peak out at about a little over $4.3 million. And then we see a decrease. Don't be fooled by the scale here. It's only about a half-million dollar decrease, but it is a decrease. And then you see we're pretty flat after that. So just something to keep in mind after the 2017 year, so 2018 is when that'll hit us. Food service, real quickly, revenues, basically, we always budget revenues to equal expenses. That's our plan. You see, last year, we came really close. We did increase K4 budgets as required by the Department of Public Instruction and feds by five cents. And then we basically have, hopefully, for zero impact on fund balance. Capital projects fund, it's anticipated we'll spend about $28 million, about 35 left at the beginning of this year, so we still think we'll have $7 million. That's a total guess on our part, but we'll still be doing some construction at the high school this next summer. So those payments will trail a little bit probably past July 1st. Employee trust funds, we've talked a little bit about those again. The trust fund is the sick leave conversion amount, and we budgeted another $142,000 decrease in that fund. We don't have as many people retiring as we did before, and so people are starting to use those funds and not as much money is going into that fund. Again, nothing to be worried about, just something we have to kind of give an estimated guess on. And then the OPEP fund, we plan on increasing that again. The Department of Public Instruction says once you have that fund, you have to continue to put a little bit of money into it till the liability's covered. So we anticipate a $283,000 increase there. Community education, again, we, DPI doesn't really see it this way, but we break it into four different segments in our, in our, in our funds. In the community ed fund, one is pool, about $200,000 going from taxpayers into balance, make the pool operations work. Performing arts centers, about $22,000. Community education outreach and recreation, $360,000. And then community building use security, we hire a person to check our buildings on the weekends to make sure that everything gets locked up. This, I'm not going to read to you. Basically, it's just a requirement that DPI has, that state law has now, that says how we're going to use the community ed fund. And it basically says, oops, sorry, it says, "Fund is used to activities such as adult education, community rec, youth and adult recreation programs, public programs, performing arts, community pool operations, and other programs which are not elementary or secondary education programs but have primary function serving the community." So that's the gist of that. Tax levy calculation, which we'll be approving later in the annual meeting. Operational breaks out into the operational fund. Levy is 8.5 million. And then referendum debt, which is included within the revenue limitation formula, 5.25. Approved, referendum debt, 4.2 million. Community services, we just talked about that, 3.80. Prior year levy chargeback, that's just something that if a taxpayer doesn't pay their taxes, the municipality charges us that money, and we get to charge it back after it's happened. So just a small 60 charge, and the community computer aid of 4.76. Take too much time to explain that, it's not a huge thing, but we have to basically reduce that aid payment from our levy. Here's where our equalization values are and what we anticipate our mill rate being. Again, this is, this is estimated at this time. At the end of the week, or probably Monday, I will actually get to know hopefully this equalization value number, but we are estimating at 4.5 percent. This is based on the referendum not, that referendum not being in there right now, so right now, the levy is anticipated to go down. It would go up slightly if the referendum is approved. Again, some graphs that kind of demonstrate what we're talking here. Equalization aid and property taxes, you see these things kind of going back and forth a little bit. As our enrollment starts to increase, our equalization aid's increasing a little bit. When our enrollment's flatter, then property taxes have been kind of popping up a little bit above that. Our mill rate, kind of what's been happening there, and our equalization values as well. Total revenue budget, all funds, heads up to about $54 million from all the funds that we talked about. Expenditures are $83 million. Hopefully, that doesn't scare you. Remember, we're spending the referendum dollars. And then here's my favorite sheet, which I had to continue to include, which kind of shows what's going on individually with each fund, which I won't talk you through, but basically, a small decrease in general fund if we spend all the fund balance, which usually buildings continue to have some carryover, so I don't anticipate going down that low. Will probably be a little bit over $11 million would be my test and anticipation. And I will click the next one, and I think, let's see how I probably did here. Close, come on. 22 minutes, that's close. Okay. Are there any questions? Yes?
Can we get copies of this, hard copies?
Sure. No problem. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, Andy. And that will conclude the budget hearing portion of the annual meeting at 6:53 PM. And at that time, I'll now call to order the annual meeting. There are orange packets over here with the agenda and sample motions for those of you who don't have them as we proceed through that. So the annual meeting is called to order at 6:54 PM. First order of business is to elect a chairperson. Are there any nominations for a chair?
Will Steve Zock?
Sir's second, Doug Cornet ski. And could you give your address, Doug?
Sure. Doug Cornet ski, 4334 McConnell Street, Pittsburgh.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? At this point, I think would be appropriate to entertain a motion to close nominations and to elect Steve Zock as chairperson for the meeting. Is there that motion? Mark Beany makes the motion. Second to that. Dan Kraus seconds that motion. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Third item on the agenda is appointment of parliamentarian, and I will appoint Gina Jonin for district legal counsel as parliamentarian for tonight's meeting. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the ground rules, and those are found on page two of the orange packet. I will not read those, and I would entertain a motion to approve those ground rules. Is there that motion?
I move to approve the ground rules as printed on the handout.
That motion's made by Dan Kraus. Is there a second?
Second.
Doug Cornet ski with a second to that motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ground rules are adopted. The minutes of the September 28, 2015 meeting are included in the packet, and I would entertain a motion to dispense with reading of those minutes.
So move.
Charles Upoff makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Gwen Maitzen with a second. All those in favor of the motion to dispense with reading of the September 28, 2015 minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to dispense of reading of those minutes. Next item on the agenda is the state and the district report, and before that, I will introduce our superintendent, Dr. Brian Buswick. Brian, the floor is yours.
In the spirit of keeping everyone's attention tonight, Andy and I are using an economy of slides, so this is our part, this is the part one slides that I'm going to share. And no surprise, our story always begins with students. You can see some young elementary students and of course, some graduates from this past, from this past June. And we all know the celebration and accomplishments that our students make. When we look at why we exist as a school district, our mission statement dates back to 1992, and this isn't a complete copy, it's what I call our summary copy, and it's about helping students acquire the skills, knowledge, and attitudes needed to achieve their full potential. What we value, this is a project that the board initiated with our visioning conference in 2015, and our visioning steering committee took all of the information we received from the community, and we distilled it down into five values. You'll notice at the center is the whole child emphasis. And as we go clockwise around this apple, it begins with relevant and empowering learning experiences, which, that's what we do every day with the 4,000 students in our schools. Our educational equity, which is a new priority for the district. Strong family and community partnerships, something the district has long had sort of a time-honored value. And then lastly, at the top of the clock, caring and professional educators. In a minute or two, I'm going to share some information on our upcoming November 8 referendum, and you'll notice that that complete focus is on caring and professional educators. Here's something we were really proud about. The administrative team reported this over the summer to the board, actually in this very room. In the class of 2016, we had a 99 percent graduation rate. I'm going to say that one more time, 99 percent graduation rate. That is a great source of That is a great source of pride, a great source of hard work, a great source of dedication on behalf of our students and, and our parents in the community. We're not going to stop there, we're going to get to 100%, and hopefully we can get to 100% with the class of 2016 yet this year, and we're going to push to have a similar graduation rate next year. Based on the 2015 visioning conference, you'll remember this is a picture of the dozen or so students, all ages, that came to talk to us about their experiences in the Oregon School District. And the board took this work along with the district office administrators and established four key priorities for the 1617 school year. Here are those four priorities. We already have the first priority completed with the completion of the visioning paper that the board formally approved at the first meeting in September. The educator compensation plan is on the tracks right now for a November 8th ballot vote for our community. We continue to work on personalized learning, that's been a priority that John Tanner and Leslie Bergstrom have led with a task force of school staff for the last five, six years. And then educational equity. This is the year that we're in the study phase on educational equity. We plan to bring the plan to the board in 2017 and make that an official rollout for the 1718 school year. That's just a reminder to myself to go to the next PowerPoint slide. I know some of you may have seen this, but since we have while taping us tonight, and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago with Paul Swicker, and Paul mentioned to me that at a typical board meeting, 60 to 100 community members will be watching us livestream. So I thought this is a great opportunity to talk to everyone in the audience, as well as the 60 to 100 people that are tuned in on livestream. This is our standard presentation on the 2016 referendum. Again, you've heard about our what we value statements and how that began at the visioning conference and how we're utilizing that in all of our schools. And a real key piece, I said we would focus on the caring and professional educator portion of it. You'll notice the last sentence, "The most significant factor in student achievement is an effective educator." If we were to boil down the November 8th referendum into a couple of phrases, phrase number one would be, "It will provide us the opportunity to put the very best teacher in every classroom in every school in the Oregon School District." The second key part, and something that's on the horizon, is the looming teacher shortage. Even though we're in Dane County, and it's a little different in Dane County than northern Wisconsin, we know there is a looming teacher shortage that's going to hit our district, just as it will hit all districts across the state. We're trying to prepare for that in advance, so we don't have a crisis situation on our hands in a couple of years. This is the educator compensation plan development. You'll notice this timeline goes back to January of 2013. We have been studying this as a district, as a school community for over four years. We did some surveying in January of 2015. One thing we heard from the community was, "The tax impact was too high and we needed to increase educator accountability." We've done both of those with the November 8th plan. In August of 2015, we held our visioning conference, and in spring of 2016, the educator compensation committee recommended a new plan to the board. Over the summer, the board continued to study this plan, garner some feedback, and they voted unanimously to approve the referendum on November 8th. As I mentioned, these were a couple of the key survey responses. They had almost 1,000 survey responses in 2015. And the two key pieces of feedback, the 2015 plan was too expensive and it needed an accountability component. Again, that's something that we have factored into our new plan. The committee area of focus really identified four main points. First, we need to retain and attract and develop the best possible educators for every classroom. We need to increase our accountability from a professional development standpoint. We also need to balance the interests of taxpayers in making sure that it's affordable and that it's sustainable over time. The new educator compensation plan has six main pieces to it. Everything is focused on professional development programs designed to help educators increase student achievement. That's really a key. The board set that as a policy key, and the plan that we have out to the voters will accomplish that. We also know accountability measures to improve learning processes and evaluations was something critically important to our community. We've also increased five additional educator contract days. So our old contract of 190 days, our new contract would be 195 days, and those five days wouldn't be student construction days, they would be days when we're working on professional development specifically targeted to increase student achievement. Of course, a competitive salary schedule to retain and attract highly qualified educators. We've been operating most Act 10 without a competitive salary schedule. That has been a challenge as we recruit teachers or as we attempt to retain teachers that are in the free market, sort of free agency negotiating with other school districts that are interested in their skills because they're highly skilled individuals. We also knew it needed to be financially sustainable to protect taxpayers. We've accomplished that with this particular model. And then, of course, an overarching piece, this supports the district's vision that's been in place, that was refined in 2015 at the visioning conference. If we were to look at components of our teacher compensation plan, there's really four main components. One is there's various professional levels. Another that we heard from our teachers is, "We need a path for advancement." The advancement path is based upon degree attainment, whether it's a bachelor, master's, or national board certification, performance evaluation, and then of course licensing in good stand, in good standing with the state of Wisconsin. Why is the plan necessary? As a number of us have made community presentations or civic group presentations or reviewing with staff, Act 10 eliminated the collective bargaining schedule that we had for, since about 1973 in the district. Since 2011, all Dane County districts have a new teacher compensation plan, and we are the exception. As I mentioned earlier, one of those key underpinning points is the looming teacher shortage. We know from research that university and college program enrollment is down almost 30% from 2008, 2009. 30%, one-third of a drop in terms of applicants. More than 4,900 teachers have left the profession since 2013, and the interesting thing is, almost half of those teachers that left the profession were under the age of 50, and in many cases, that's the challenge. That's how we're going to have that looming teacher shortage. If we can't retain a teacher for a five-year period, we lose a lot of teachers in that year one, year two, year three, and year four. Why we need a November 8th referendum? There are, as Andy mentioned, limits to the amount of money school boards can raise. Since I've been around a long time, I remember state statute said, "School boards can approve a levy to maintain the tax necessary to operate the schools." That was the pre-revenue cap approach. If we were back with that state law, likely we would not need a referendum because the board could set the appropriate levy. Now, like all public schools in Wisconsin, we are limited in terms of the amount of money we raise. We also have not fully rebounded from the pre-Act 10 budget cuts that occurred at the state level. Here's the tax impact, Andy alluded a bit to that, and he noticed in his chart, we are still going down in terms of our mill rate. The tax impact, we think is very reasonable, especially when compared to other operating referendums, and this referendum is a recurring referendum, which means it will go on and on, doesn't have a two-year limit, a three-year limit, or a five-year limit. A $100,000 home, the annual tax impact is around $45, probably a little less because that's a conservative number that Andy gave us on last year's equalized value, and he saw in his presentation, we will likely increase almost a little over 4%. On the average home in the Oregon School District of around $250,000, the annual tax impact will be 112. We break that into a monthly amount, it's about $10 a month. So again, by comparison with other recurring referendums in neighboring districts or across the state, a $10 per month tax impact is about as low as we can make it. Here's the ballot question, and the ballot question, I think the board did a great job working with our bond council and legal council to come up with the question. If you vote yes for it, that's an affirmative. If you vote no, that's against the question. So sometimes questions are written where you have to vote no, to vote yes. We made it very straightforward. A yes is an affirmative, is an affirmative vote, and it would give the, give the school board the authority to raise 1.5 million dollars a year for recurring purposes consisting of paying employee compensation for teachers and other educational staff. We have tons of information that we're starting to get out in the community. We have an orange informational brochure that we've dropped over 3,000 so far. I'm going to be sending out an email to all parents this week, so our parent email list is just under 5,000. We are also in the process of working with the Donovan Group to develop a newsletter that should hit most homes on October 13th or 14th. And then we're also going to be sending out a referendum reminder vote the week of October 31st. We have close to 50 to 55 community touches or meetings that we have scheduled. We're about a third of the way through. We are also talking about two community meetings in October, so if anyone has a question, they can email us, they can give me a call, they can contact any school board members, and they will answer the question or route it to the right person because we want to make sure that by the time we get to November 8th, everyone has the accurate information on what the plan is about. With that, I will stop and see if there are any questions. After Mr. Zock.
Thank you, Brian, for presenting us with the State of the District. Next on our agenda is old business and there is none. We'll proceed to the new business, and I would turn you to suggested resolution, which is in your packet. We need to adopt a levy, and as Andy has presented, with respect to the 2016, 2017 budget, we are looking for a tax levy of $23,687,980. And so there's a sample motion under item 8A, if someone would make that for purposes of approving the levy for our 2016, 2017 budget. So Doug Cornet ski moves to adopt the tax levy for a total levy of $23,687,980 as set forth in your packet. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Charles Uphoff seconds that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of adopting the tax levy of $23,687,980, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries by unanimous voice vote. Second item on the new business is adoption of school board salaries for 2016, 2017. In your packet, you will see the breakdown of the current amounts that are paid for school board members, the officers, and for committee assignments, and there's a proposed resolution there. Is there a motion from the floor?
Mr. Chair, so move. However, I would like to discuss the motion and offer an amendment to it. How would you like to proceed with that?
I would, if you would just make a motion that would incorporate whatever change you want. This is a proposed motion, so you can make a motion any way you want.
Okay.
At this point.
All right, thank you. First of all, to preface the motion, a number of years back, I was here to make a proposal to the community on adopting a new board salary. At the time, it was not budget neutral, and times are never good to suggest something that perhaps is not. And I see last year, there were also motions that were made by other members of the community to propose salaries that were not budget neutral. I would like to make a motion this evening that is budget neutral, but slightly changes the way board members are compensated for their time, for their many, many long hours. My motion is what you see written before you, however, with the change that the $500 per committee assignment be allocated evenly amongst all board members and added to their base stipend. With the participatory nature of this, of this board, I think that that would be a fair way to equal out the salaries or the stipends that each person gets. So my motion is to accept the first part of the salaries as listed currently for each office position, but to take the $500, that total dollars, which is $4,000, and divide that equally amongst all board members. Budget is $6,500? $6,500? I stand corrected, I'm sorry. So to take that $6,500 then, and to divide that equally amongst all board members.
Okay, so the, the current committee budget allocation of $6,500 in your motion would be to, to divide that equally and add that equally to the salaries as indicated for the officers and the three non-officer members?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's the motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Wyland seconds that. Is there any discussion regarding the motion that's on the floor?
Just a procedural question, and perhaps Gina can address this. My understanding normally, the expectation is amendments or substitute motions provided will be divided in line. Is that something we could do?
So it's not part of our ground rules, but this actually is the main motion because that's not a motion, it's just a sample motion. So Mr. Cornet ski's motion is the main motion on the floor. And if I could add point of order, each board member, you decide whether or not you want to abstain from a vote, but just to let you know ethically, it's recommended that you recuse yourself or abstain from a vote that would impact you financially.
Ms. Maitzen.
According to my calculations, then dividing that money up, it would divide by seven, it would become, instead of $500 per committee, it would be $964, is that correct?
No, I think what the motion is that the committee assignment, that line that you'd be paid 500 for each would be eliminated, and the money that's allocated for that would be placed on the, the base salary or base salary for the board members. So for whatever that is, 6,500 divided by seven.
Divided by seven, it's close to the $900.
It's $964, but you know, and 28, 29 cents.
But you're really only dividing the 500 times seven board members, so 3,500.
No, no, the total, the total budget for the committee work is $6,500. $6,500 divided by seven is $928.57.
So that would mean that a non-officer would be getting 1,800 and some dollars.
Correct.
The treasurer would be getting 1,900 some odd dollars, that sort of thing. But just budget neutral, Mr. Cornet ski?
It is budget neutral.
In terms of what's allocated in this budget, it's just reallocating committee dollars and spreading them equally amongst the seven. and spreading them equally amongst the seven board members.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Maitzen.
I have a statement. As someone who has been elected to the school board, I understand that this is my civic responsibility, and I do not support the increased salary because I think that when we ran and won the election, we understood that this is not about money, but it's about duty, and so I think that this is inappropriate at this particular time when our teachers are up for getting a salary raise, and until that is satisfied, I cannot support this.
Any other discussion?
I do understand the position. It is, as I said, budget neutral, and if I can point out, when I was a board member, we did have board members refund their board salaries each year back to the district, so you're more than willing and able to do that.
But I think the timing is bad regardless of donations.
Ms. Feeney.
I would make the comment that with the change that we made in committee structure, our stipend would actually be going down because many of us are now only appointed to one committee. And I understand none of us did this for the money, and I'm not particularly concerned about my own financial gain. What I'm thinking about is in the future, individuals who will run for the board, and in my mind, providing some kind of fair consideration is a reflection of the value that the community places on the work that we do. And there will be people continuing to run for the board in the future, and I think it's important that they see, they have an indication that the community values this work. So for that reason, I am supportive of this, although I will not vote on it.
Ms. Maitzen.
Back in the day, we were taught civic duty, and there's no value on that because it's valueless in terms of it being a responsibility that is important. And if we equate money with duty all the time, then, you know, who's going to run for office? And, I mean, it's just for the money, even though the money is minor. I think that logically, we need to promote that this is a civic responsibility to move forward and serve our people in a democratic process, and that's what it's all about.
Mr. Uphoff.
Yeah, in the same sense that I think Gina referred to, it really isn't appropriate for school board members to be voting on their own compensation. I think the whole question of whether, or to what extent the community values the work that's done by board members is a decision that the community members should make, and so it's my preference not to weigh in on this issue. I think it's really a decision for the community.
Any other discussion? I have a question from Mr. Wieland regarding the impact of this motion. Would the amount that would be paid out to the school board as a whole increase or decrease or stay the same with this motion?
It would theoretically stay the same. Last year, there were two extra members on committees, so technically it's going down, but the budgeted dollar for $6,500, in fact, would be at budget neutral, doesn't have an additional impact.
Okay, so the school board as a whole is not going to be paid more? It's just being reallocated? Is that how I understand it for that clarification? Any other discussion? The motion on the floor with a second is to approve salaries for the board members of the Oregon School District for the 2016, 2017 year, school year, as listed, or the president, vice president, clerk treasurer, and the three non-officer members, as listed, and those base salaries would be increased by a sum of $6,500 divided by seven. So each of those would be increased by that. Okay? Anybody have any question about what's on the table? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Can we have a count?
Extension's noted.
Yeah, I would do that. Did anybody abstain in voters?
Can we have a count?
Do you want the House, Division of the House?
A recorded vote, please.
Okay. I think that's appropriate at this point in time, this doing, this parliamentarian. So we will do a ballot.
Can we put in our accounts automatically? I know.
For purposes of this ballot, the electors are only residents of the school district who are...
How can we vote on this when there's nobody here?
Then we'll have a record of your abstention.
Nice suit.
Thank you.
Isn't it nice to be aware of?
Just to clarify that, those who are eligible to vote are those members of the Oregon School District. For those folks in attendance who reside within the boundaries of the Oregon School The result of the vote is 13 yes, one no, and four abstentions, so the motion carries, and the salaries of the board president or the board members would be set accordingly. Next item on the agenda for new business is to set the date and hour for the 2017 annual meeting. The board recommends the fourth Monday in September for 2017. Ms. Maitzen, you have a question?
I do. Concerning the increase for the school board members, could it be written on a check rather than automatically put into account so that we actually see it come into our accounts so that we can do something to return it?
That you'll have to address with the district administration and how that's paid out.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I just note that I absented myself from the room during that vote, and I would like to be listed as abstaining as well. Thank you, Mr. Crowe. I abstained as well. New business resolution, the resolution we're requesting is to set the 2017 annual meeting for the fourth Monday in September. That would be September 25th, '27, and I'd entertain a motion to that effect. So move. Mr. Wieland makes a motion. Mr. Crowe seconds it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The annual meeting for next year will be on September 25th at 2017 at 6:30 in the evening. The next item on the agenda is other new business. There is none, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the 2016 budget or annual meeting. So move. Mr. Uphoff makes that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Feeney makes the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The 2016 annual meeting is adjourned at 7:30 PM. Thank you for your attendance.